Waiting for your go ahead to go live. We are broadcasting.
Okay, next up, board call. Please do the board call.
Sam.
Here.
Sarah Fashinsky is not here. Audra Ollmeyer here. Um, Conchester.
Here.
Tara Ryder is not here. Lisa Harper here. And Jody Boucher here.
Great. Next up, election board president, board vice president. I thought the history clerk was supposed to run this part. My floor first part?
Uh, either one has important questions. She's got to take nominations from the president and the vice president.
Yeah. Sorry. Um, either one of us can run the meeting at this point, but what we are at is looking for nomination. We'll start with, um, for president.
I'll go over any audio.
Am I being interesting? I'll second that.
That was quick.
Do you want to make another nomination? No, I'm. Okay.
It's in.
Good hope. I want favor.
I might want to go myself.
Yes?
Oh, okay.
Great.
Don't know. Thanks.
Okay, now, she's supposed to, the vice president question?
Yes, so you now can preside over the meeting and then you will look for nominations for the vice president role as well.
Okay.
First.
So I'm moving now?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I'm currently moving now.
Oh.
Take your name.
Yep, yep, take that.
Okay. Oh, thanks. Oh. We're seeking nominations for vice president.
I think I lost it all.
Other than that, who else wants to?
Sure, sure. Great, I'll give you some.
No, yeah.
I'll move it to. Do you have any discussion? Is that what we're discussing?
Okay.
All those in favor?
Okay.
Okay. I don't have. So I'm.
You're great.
Guys.
Like, if you need Japanese, you say.
What's that?
Instead of Gillikers.
Jeopardy, Jeopardy music?
Was playing Russian with modifications. This is the. Did you have? And did you have? Stuff that you could be?
I think we wanted to talk about it.
I think we, right, I think we wanted to move.
I saw some emails.
Move, um, entering into executive session fourteen A.
Okay.
To before, yes.
Okay.
Like, we could add the acceptance of the agenda before we get into session three.
I feel like I would have lost here. Okay, I don't know.
What are your advisors?
Oh.
Can I, we wanna do section three first, which is like the committees, or do we wanna? Yeah, let me get a report.
What is the power? Do we have, can we go to exec, do we have to accept the agenda before we can move on to other items, or? Okay. So.
Just kind of the marketing.
We would have to accept the agenda before we can move on to other items, or we can move on to our executive? We can't move on to the executive?
Okay, accept the agenda with modification to moving the executive session up in the agenda, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so where do we wanna put that in the agenda, though? Do we want to go through section, well, section two, three, and four? And then before we hit section five, we break for executive session?
Before we hit personnel?
Yeah. Right, so, yeah.
Oh, between six and seven.
Between six and seven, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can I have a motion to accept the agenda with modifications and moving the executive section up to between? Six, section six and seven.
Would you?
I know. I'll just.
No.
Section three, designation of committee members.
I passed it out in a piece of paper, just basically to see it, although it was in the agenda. And then, um, I did match with our two members who aren't in the building today. And both of them had indicated that if there was room for it, they would like to stay on the committees that they are already on. Um, and that would be Tara, as in all for policy and, and on athletics. And Sarah was on athletics and would like to also stay on, um, capital project if possible. But I just wanted to note that for you guys while you're discussing what you wanna do.
So first, please, budget finance and audit committee. Um, Chris is in here, John's not here, and we will. And. For anybody that would like, we have two spots open. Is there anyone that would like to?
Can I just ask a question, because now we're a seven-person board, so is there opposition to having three members on a committee versus just two?
Uh, no, you just can't. It's real clear.
Right, so we have three. And not consider that third person on the ultimate? Right?
Okay.
So in that case, I'd like to be added to the athletic committee.
Please, thank you.
Uh, I could do budget finance on it.
Okay.
I can also do that on.
Ken, do you wanna stay on that?
I'll stay on.
Okay.
Okay. Is that the whole?
Is there anybody that is chairing, uh, your, your previous chairperson is, is no longer on that committee? So Sam, Lisa, and Ken, those of you wanting to be on the budget finance spot committee, can we develop a chairperson for that?
Yeah, that's real good.
Personnel grievance and negotiations. I would like to stay on that committee. Um, and then we have John, and then Tim, Lizzy, and.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
You wanna stay on the chairperson?
Sure.
Tim, you wanna stay on that?
I care. Is there else one?
Cause I pretty much like to move.
Uh.
Bye.
That's fine.
Okay. We have policy review, it's Tim, myself, and the ultimate is Tara. I would say. I'll set off this one if anybody wants it.
Uh, before Sarah's there.
We get Tara.
Mm-hmm. Capital project, John, Ken, and then Tara. I don't mind you on that one.
I'll stay on too.
Okay.
Who's chair of that one?
Ken, I think that's the first one, you need to be a chair. And then athletic, Sarah, Tara, and then Jody.
Yeah.
Do you wanna be the chairperson?
I'll be Sarah's chair.
Good luck there. Okay. You also do great job.
Sorry, the budget finance and audit.
Okay.
Requires. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I saw one in your hand and I saw one in your hand.
Yeah.
Skip it over.
Um, move on to reports, the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Audra. Uh, we have an obligation with our district-wide safety plan to open it for public comment during the summer. Uh, for thirty days, we have done so. That plan was written with our contract with Needham, who provides all of our consulting and expertise in, in school safety. And they review state policies and things. They have been reviewing all of our plans, both our building level as well as our district-wide safety plan. There are no dramatic changes to our plans and procedures that we have in place, other than going in and changing the names of staff that are involved in certain aspects of the safety plan. But it has to be open for thirty days, which we will have posted on the website, that it's open for people to make comments on. Uh, and then in our, in our board meeting in August, we will have a small snippet of the board meeting be formally a public hearing. Uh, for that, and then we adopt it, and that's our plan going forward. Um, if we had substantive changes to any of our safety plans, we would be presenting those to you before we opened it up to our public. But, um, we meet monthly with an emergency team here, uh, and with Needham, who sends their consultant with us. And we don't have any, uh, dramatic changes to our plan, so that is, uh, something we will have to do logistically this summer. Uh, I chaired out with you earlier this week with some updates, and one of those was the fact that our capital project has gone through all the engineering, uh, review. And now it's to the financial piece of the project, uh, with the intent of getting sign-off from the financial part of SED this summer. So that we then can have authorization to go to bid late fall, which is a great time from a construction standpoint, as contractors are coming off a busy summer. And they're planning next year's construction season. Going to bid in the fall is the most, uh, beneficial to get the best pricing. Um, we will have a presentation from Tetra Tech and the other agencies involved with designing this project to come in, um, early in the fall, probably in September, early October at the latest. To do a full presentation for everybody as to where we are. But it totally entails what are some of the new timelines that are in place. With the construction beginning next, uh, next, uh, yeah, next summer. So we will be going into full construction next summer. And then, um, it slows down through the regular school year a little bit, and then finishes up the following summer. Please.
Question, is that meeting that's set for, well, it's supposed to be set for the end of September, early October, is that open to the community? Is that just the board?
It'll be to you as board members. Uh, so it'll be open to the public as needed. And, you know, we can, we can post it on the website and things so people can see it, because it's been uniquely such a long period of time from when we went to vote. To when the public's gonna see shovels in the ground.
Yeah.
It probably would be a good refresher for the public to get an update on what's included in the process.
Okay. Thanks.
Uh, of course, been a lot of hiring, and several of the, the, uh, people that have been hired and offered positions are on the agenda. So a great deal of work's been involved with that. And then, uh, graduation, of course, Friday night was, uh, was a wonderful event to, to honor those graduates. And I appreciate those of you who could, who could make it, uh, that evening. And, um, that one's in the books for the class of twenty twenty-five. Um, and I thought it went well, even with a little bit of snafu with the envelopes for our scholarships, you know, it kinda, you know, we, we had a little fun with it, so it was fun. But I appreciate everybody's involvement with that, uh, as well. Uh, the secondary principals slash athletic administrator closes on Friday. There currently are ten applicants in the hopper who have made official application for that position. And that's all.
Thank you. Um, the business office report?
Yes, thank you very much. Uh, business office is hopping, very crazy and busy, but this is a good time of year, a lot of things are getting done. But we are finishing the grant work on the six eleven and six nineteen grants, and we are, um, beginning the process of the UPK. Um, all those are the earlier grants, the titles are later in the summer. Uh, payrolls, uh, were kind of a little crazy, again, we have the last and the first, so it's just the, um, changing of the guard and a lot of, uh, just complicated pieces, but we were able to do it. Again, I would just like to send out a thank you to my wonderful team, Michelle Sherwood and Ron Black, for, again, getting all this work, uh, done. Uh, we sent out the mini bids through the New York State Vehicle Marketplace. And we, um, have been voter-approved for the three mini-bands for this coming year. Uh, we are still finalizing the twenty-four, twenty-five school year with our closing of the books. Uh, we're almost at that process to be done. And now we're starting the twenty-five, twenty-six year with, uh, requisitions and doing, uh, what we call blanket requisitions for different vendors that we know are contractual and things like that. So a lot of, uh, movable pieces, but we're doing well, and we're excited to start the new school year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, secondary principals report.
Uh, Dr. Kroposki couldn't be here this evening, so I, uh, he said it's a, it's a fairly small report, but, um, I told him I'd deliver it on his behalf. Um, the grades and scores from all our regents exams and from the courses at the secondary level are all being implemented. And students that, um, as a result of their testing and/or their averages, uh, that might need to come to summer school for credit recovery are being communicated with. Um, we're planning, uh, everything in place with that, with, uh, Sam Connolly is overseeing our summer credit recovery program. That starts next week. Um, the good news is, we have the smallest number of students that are in need of summer credit recovery, uh, that we've had in quite a few years, so that's, uh, that's a good sign. Um, again, Nick wanted to say thank you to everybody for a wonderful graduation ceremony, and thank everyone who was involved in helping with that setup and, uh, the awards. And especially a shout-out to all the donors who contributed to our scholarships that went out the door. Um, that was a tremendous effort from families, memorials, businesses. Thirty-seven different scholarships went out, uh, well over thirty-seven thousand dollars' worth of money also went out with it. Um, and a congratulations to the retirees from the district, um, TA and three teachers, and then, uh, John Vugliomo, uh, officially getting acknowledged for his retirement from school board service. And lastly, the master schedule, uh, graduated on Friday. We come in, we start building next year's master schedule at the high school, uh, level. And then because there's crossover staff, they then shift focus and go over, and we'll start working with, with Jessica and her team on building the elementary schedule as well.
How many, did we have any, like, other regents exams, like, any last or another that, like, didn't go any far on passing the exam?
Um, I can get you an official report for, for our next meeting, or put it together and send it to you electronically, and then we can.
Please.
So that we have it to discuss. Um, I know there's some that are being, uh, evaluated now as to where they are, so I would like to give you an accurate report when this happens.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Elementary principals report.
Well, it has been a very active month, so when I take a look back, just a couple of things to go over. Um, grandparents' breakfast was a huge success. We had over two hundred, about two hundred and eleven grandparents, uh, come to the event, plus students and a few extras. I wanna say a huge shout-out to our PTO for sponsoring the event. Thank you so much. Um, we could not have done it without your backing of the event. Um, our food service team, who did an incredible job, heard tons of compliments from all of the folks who were there. Um, our buildings and grounds crew for your quick action in setting up extra room, um, for us. Our clerical staff for dealing with those large volumes of folks coming through the doors. And I'd also like to give a shout-out to our National Honor Society student leaders, who came and volunteered and were great, um, you know, leaders, um, volunteering for the event, showing people around. And then walking our, you know, our students back to the classroom. So it was a great event. We've already got our wheels spinning on how we can improve upon that and, and make it a yearly event. Um, we had a lot of graduation ceremonies going on on this side of the house. Our pre-K, um, picnic was a great success, kindergarten graduation, our fifth grade graduation, we're all very well-attended by the community. Um, so a great job to all of the folks that were involved in those areas, and our music department for, um, being involved in those things as well. Our international club, uh, went out with a bang this year and, um, attended a business luncheon, if you haven't seen the pictures on our, our website. Um, we had a business luncheon where we invited a special guest from AAA Northway, um, to come and talk to us about international travel. The kids had a lot of great questions, um, and she was able to answer those questions and give them general information about international travel and what to think about. And, and how to go about getting passports and tips and tri- tricks about what to bring and what not to bring when traveling outside of the country. So, um, while enjoying a nice, um, Japanese lunch at the Mikado. They had a great time, and they were very, very well-behaved. They dressed the part professionally, and it was a great, it was a pleasure to be there with them, representing the school. Um, again, I'd like to, um, I'm really excited that our National Honor Society students are stepping it up over the summer. They're going to, um, continue with the backpack program over the summer and use the leftover items that we have to fill backpacks for our summer academy students. And we have some volunteers who are gonna come in and put that in place for the four weeks of the, of the summer academy program. And we have a few who have even signed up to do reading buddies. So that was, that's gonna be a great pairing for those older students and for the younger students. Um, we had the Birds of Prey program come here to the school, so thank you to the Ford Everfree Library for sponsoring that event. Students, faculty, and staff absolutely loved that, it was a great way to end of the year, end the year. We had a, um, we had a very productive end-of-year staff meeting on the elementary side, a debrief where we went over our I-ready results. Uh, was able to announce that we met our goal for both the reading and the math growth, which was exciting. We talked about setting goals for next year, so the wheels are spinning. And, um, we talked about curriculum mapping, and, um, we were able to establish a summer math PLC with a focus on math fluency. Which through some surveying, um, the staff feels that that's an area that we need some attention on over here on the elementary side, is really mastering those math facts. So we've got, we already have a committee and a date set, and we're ready to go to tackle some of that work over the summer, so I'm excited about that. And, um, then I was able to do like an exit interview at all grade levels to find out how I can best support them throughout the summer. Um, so it was a great way to end the year. Um, looking ahead, we have, we're gearing up for summer academy, so Christina Bump is, is heading that. Right now, we're breaking records, we currently have, as of four-thirty this afternoon, eighty students enrolled, pre-K through eight, for that program. So it's going to be a very busy summer here. It's a space camp theme, and we start on July eighth, and we run through the thirty-first. Um, we've got several groups coming in to do some planning. Um, we've got our positivity project for planning committee coming in on the ninth. Um, we've had, we've been invited by News Channel Ten to go down to their, um, newsroom on July tenth. They would like a student representative to go down, and they would like to interview them, as well as a couple of staff members on our brain shield designation, which is quite an honor. Um, we've got a science of reading PLC meeting going on, and, um, I'm in the work, in the middle of kind of designing some of my, um, some principal initiatives that I would like to bring forth to bed on ways to really focus on attendance, academics, um, and some faculty and staff acknowledgements for the upcoming school year. As well as developing some peer walkthrough checklist. So all of that is happening, and I'm honored and excited to take on this new role. So, the last thing is, I would like to publicly say thank you to all of my coworkers who surprised me last week with a, um, send-off from the teacher ranks and a welcome into the principal ranks. Were very, I was taken back by the generosity and, and the surprise and the welcome. So, thank you.
Thank you. Um, building maintenance report.
Okay, uh, very, very busy, um, with everything going on between, uh, field trips and then, and then everything else happening in the school with trying to gear up for graduation. And I will say, uh, I thought the school looked spectacular, um, on all the floors, and the guys did a fabulous job. They, they really are getting focused on detail. Um, so I'm, I've kind of been pushing for that. Uh, so we're, we're hiring, I'm, I'm a little bit nervous right now, cause, um, we're hiring some summer help to help out, which I'm gonna desperately need. Uh, these summer folks, uh, young people that are coming in to help, uh, move furniture and, and keep things moving forward. Because there are some rooms this year that we're gonna try to tackle also on painting and getting, getting, we're trying to raise the level of the school overall. So I've got some painting to do, which I'm, uh, I hope everybody realizes that not everybody can paint. So I have to be careful on that. I don't like the roll marks on the ceiling. I try to get close, maybe that kind of thing. Um, so, um, I'm a little bit, a little bit nervous. Um, Paul, Paul, um, is, is gotta go out.
Nope, nope, nope. At least, don't comment on that, please.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry.
That's fine.
So I've got, I've got some things happening that's gonna make, make a little, me a little nervous on, on getting things taken care of. So, um, with that, hydro testing on the heat exchanger, thanks to, um, thanks to, uh, Ken on getting me hooked up with RF Gordon. RF Gordon is going to come in and do a hydro test on the unit because it's leaking, and they believe that it could be the expansion tank now, so it's, it's not, it's not that hard. And they believe that it could be the expansion tank now, so it's, it's not, it's not that part. And, uh, I'm looking forward to it. Hopefully that was going to be big money, so I'm hoping we can kind of get that taken care of. Uh, fire inspection is done throughout the school. I was very pleased to see that we had some very minor dings that we got, so it was very good. That went through and everything was fine. Uh, other than that, that's where we are.
Thank you. Um, discussion items. So A, um, do we need a question or something? No. Evaluation of live streaming meetings. How do you guys feel about that?
I don't think we need that anymore.
I know.
COVID's over.
We're not in COVID, like they can come to meetings.
Force some people to actually come to meetings.
Very, okay.
Yeah. I'm kind of impotent, but it seems like it, it trains people to kind of passively consume what we do. And not, not really engage.
Seems like we consistently don't have community comments and like you said, people are just passively watching and maybe if they're here, it would foster some conversation from the community.
Uh, Sandy had put together some, because you saw this was a discussion topic, Sandy Wagner, he put together a chart of um, the different things that we have streamed over, you know, the past year, if you will, um, and maybe a little longer than that. Um, and again, it doesn't mean they were watched live. It meant, you know, they could have watched them at some other point, but it also has the duration of time that they actually watched. And when you think the length of the entire, like a typical board meeting, the typical duration though is like six, six minutes, seven minutes. So people are going in and watching specifically, um, a segment of the board meeting and not necessarily watching the board meeting from start to finish as an engaged member. Um, and then, uh, it's about, and this is again, I don't want to take words out of Sandy's mouth, but he did, he, he services a lot of schools in the area and so he canvassed the districts in the area and it's about fifty percent. So there's a lot of schools that don't and there are still some that do. So it's, it's really each individual board member's preference, but serves them the best for where you are.
So if we don't want to, what do we need to do? Do we need to add it to the agenda, make a motion?
Um.
How do we stop that?
I think, well, I think we need to notify our public, you know, so we can do that through, you know, with Ryan Herman to get that word out to everybody. I don't think you have to have a motion. You don't have a policy. You have a policy that says you can livestream, but you don't have a policy that says you will and have to. So it's just a matter about sharing out with the public, which we have time and we can do on a consistent basis. That's going forward after this meeting. Our meetings will be, uh, in attendance.
Good. Sounds good.
Good.
Um, vice president duties.
This was mine on there. Um, I wanted to bring up the idea from a couple of months ago of having the vice president do informal mentoring with new board members. Does this seem okay, just like text or call every couple of months, check in?
Is it necessary? It's one of the things.
Totally optional.
I think it's one of the things that like, we went to, um, one of the NISBA events of like how our onboarding is and all of that and trying to like keep communication with the new board members and what we do and things like that.
Wouldn't a group text serve that purpose that we use now?
I feel like that's working pretty good.
I mean, like keeping everybody, this way it's not, you're not just set very person to person. Right.
Yeah.
I like that a lot better, honestly. Just because everybody's included then and just because maybe we're not new, we still don't know what's going on.
Yeah, yep.
I mean, that's what I prefer.
Yeah, I agree, that's a rule.
And then the other one was, um, an idea to have the vice president attend the agenda planning meetings. Currently, the president meets with the superintendent typically the Friday before the meeting to set the agenda and, um, come up with, you know, the special items and stuff. Um, I don't particularly care if, if I attend that. It was just an idea to have the vice president attend those.
I think we just leave it as is, like it always has been. I think, and that's why I think I'll let you speak to that.
If the president knows that they're not going to be able to attend the meeting, maybe the vice president can step in and fill that role. Probably would anyway.
Yep. All right. Leave it as is?
Um, adding salary info to personnel appointments.
I don't like that.
So I had brought that up in our, in our board workshop that sometimes it will say on the board agenda, uh, such and such staff member approved for FETA contract. And then another time it'll say approved for FETA contract, but whatever the amount is. I just think for transparency and historically, if you look back, especially if it comes to like when you have to cut a position, then you have two people. You, it just looks better when we have, now that we're going to cut people, but I'm just saying, for example, it just looks better to do it the same way.
Have consistency throughout.
Mm-hmm.
With public knowledge anyway.
I was going to say, like every, like we, New York State, we kind of have to do that, like in a private side of things.
So how would I mind having that on there? And then appointing them because we add their salary?
That's all in the agenda. This, I, I don't know if there's like a specific record that I can look back on that we've talked about or something.
There's types prior to you, Kizi.
Oh, I'm like, cause all of my appointments explicitly, like I try to say, and you'll know, like, if you look at this agenda, it's just, I point to the coaching and the staff and the.
Yeah, it was no, that was not against you. It was just going back. I just think if we just make that a consistent thing that we do no matter who's in that role. That that is something that's always on. That's on, yeah. But I don't want to email you. I mean, that's, that's, that's. You're like, hi.
What are we doing here? Um, annual policy review.
So this motion is specific to the policies that are listed there that's been recommended by legal counsel that at the reorganizational meeting because of their pertinence to doing business, um, that the board, you know, definitively acknowledges that we are aware that we have these policies. And if we were to be bringing you changes, that you would have reviewed those changes and get them approved. Uh, there are policies that currently exist. They're reviewed by other people for compliance. And if there were changes, we would have been bringing them to you, acknowledging them ahead of time so that you could put them in place at this reorganizational meeting. Um, and like I said, they dictate a lot of real cornerstone procedures for us for the school year. There are no changes recommended by the state of New York or the auditors going forward. They are the exact policies, um, that are currently written. So that's why they're simply listed here is that there's no recommendations from any of our expertise or people to alter them. And they are policies you have to have by regulations in public school.
Do we need to accept them all?
Yes.
Okay. Can I have a motion to accept the annual policy review? Jody, Ken, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Um, so I need a motion for us to enter into executive session. Jody and Ken, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Where do we want to go?
We can go, we can go my house. If you don't mind the walk, then they can all stay here. Okay.
Casey?
Yeah.
We'll let the time down.
At 8:05.
Good for meeting.
Lisa made the motion and Ken second. Looking at a lot of executives.
Thank you. Okay, so we are at the annual designation consent agenda. I'm gonna group all of these together. So can I have a motion for A through... Is it T?
T, T, T.
T, T, T.
Motion.
Tim and Ken? Any discussion? All those in favor? Consent agenda. Although the board action is required, it is generally unnecessary to hold discussion on these items with the consent of all members. They are there for a group and approval is given in one motion. In the event a board member wants to discuss any item, it is moved to an appropriate place on the agenda. Can I get a motion to Group A and B together? Ken, Lisa? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Nine. Personnel consent agenda. All appointments are subject to change in compensation, proration pending, emergency school closing, and required reductions enforced. All coaching appointments are made pending completion and verification of all required coaching credentials with a stipend per FETA contract commensurate and experience and no other salary or benefits. All coaching extracurricular appointments are subject to reduction and compensation proration pending final student enrollment numbers and pending the outcome of any potential merger and emergency school closing. Can I get a motion for A through K, K? Ken, Jody? Any discussion? All those in favor? Are we just do the coaching consent agenda?
No, you're on.
Okay. There's so many on here. Coaching consent agenda. All appointments are subject to change in compensation proration pending emergency school closing and required reductions enforced. All coaching appointments are made pending completion and verification of all required coaching credentials with a stipend per FETA contract commensurate with experience and no other salary or benefits. All coaching extracurricular appointments are subject to reduction and compensation proration pending final student enrollment numbers and pending the outcome of any potential mergers and emergency school closings. Can I have a motion for A through Q? Jody and Lisa? Any discussion? All those in favor? Action agenda. We're just gonna group these together. Can I have a motion for A through H? Lisa and Ken? Any discussion?
I just have one quick question.
Okay, sir.
Do we utilize the teacher of the visually impaired services? Is that...do we have students that utilize that or is that just something that we have here as needed?
Are we currently using it? Anybody recall? Just?
I don't recall.
Honestly, fiscally, I don't remember seeing it, so I think it's as needed.
Sorry, that's how the contracts look, correct?
Yeah, I think so.
It looks like it's listed as a billable rate per 30 minutes and evaluation.
Correct.
Sorry, I don't have a clearer answer for you. It's not...a specific student or service is not jumping out at me right at the moment.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Nope.
Okay, cool. All those in favor? Personnel. All appointments are subject to change in compensation proration pending emergency school closings and required reductions enforced. All coaching appointments are made pending... Are made pending completion and verification of all required coaching credentials with a stipend per FETA contract commensurate and experience and no other salary or benefit. All coaching, extracurricular appointments are subject to reduction in compensation proration pending final student enrollment numbers and pending the outcome of any potential mergers and emergency school closings. We're gonna go through these one by one. Can I have a motion for A? Leave of absence for Ms. Markow.
Motion.
Tim and Jody? Any discussion? All those in favor? B, Teaching Assistant A Chadwick? Can I have a motion? Jody and Lisa? Any discussion? All those in favor? C, Summer Academy Teacher Aid A... What? Marchaland? Can I have a motion? Jody and Ken? Any discussion? All those in favor? Resignation of...
U S D.
Huh?
U S D.
U S D, okay. Teachers' Aid A, Marchaland. Can I have a motion for that? Lisa and Ken? Any discussion? All those in favor? Resignation C Aiken? Can I have a motion? Jody and Ken? Any discussion? All those in favor? Civil Service Removal of Kay Curry? Can I have a motion for this? Jody and Tim? Any discussion? All those in favor? Ten Year of S Connolly? Can I have a motion for that? Lisa and Ken? Any discussion? All those in favor? Ten Year of H Potter? Can I have a motion for that? Tim and Lisa? Any discussion? All those in favor? Ten Year of M Rosenthal? Can I have a motion for this?
Motion.
Tim and Lisa? Any discussion? All those in favor? So it's four to one.
I'm a no.
Ten Year of M Smith? Can I have a motion? Any discussion? Oh, sorry, Ken and Lisa. Do I have to say that one too?
It's helpful.
Okay. I'm definitely bringing water next time. There's a lot of talking. Any discussion? All those in favor? Ten Year of S Taylor? Can I have a motion? Sarah Taylor?
Second.
She's the...I have Jody and Tim. Discussion? She's the chorus teacher.
Yes, no, it was the name on the agenda and then the name on...yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's just the last thing's different, so I was confused for a moment. I'm good.
All those in favor?
Yeah.
Did she maybe...
Did she maybe do that?
Not yet.
Did I just not...I do packet case, so if it says something different from my thing to like the actual spell out, then it's just a mistake.
No, that was my mistake. I put the cart before the horse.
It could be coming. It's like a Sarah Smith.
Yeah.
You're just looking down her eyes.
The TOSA assignment for Shawna Brown Noble. Can I have a motion for this?
Yeah, motion.
Lisa and Tim? Any discussion? I'm so excited about this. I think she's gonna do amazing. All those in favor? I need a motion for Subcleaner A Vose. Ken and Lisa? Any discussion? All those in favor? Subcleaner J Boucher? Can I motion...Ken and Lisa? Any discussion? All those in favor? Subcleaner for Rowan Brown Noble? Can I have a motion for him? Jody and Ken? Any discussion? All those in favor? Special Education Teacher Kay Cook? Can I have a motion for her? Oh, I can't motion, sorry. Jody and Lisa? Any discussion? All those in favor? Physical Education Health Teacher Jay Raff? Can I have a motion? Lisa and Tim? Any discussion? All those in favor? Resignation of W Ray? Can I have a motion? Ken and Jody? Any discussion? All those in favor? Any public comments?
No.
We already did our executive session. Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Jody and Ken? All those in favor? 819.
Got it.
A little wimpy.